Okay, it is seven o'clock or slightly thereafter, so we'll go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole to order. Take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Sammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Woo.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, which would be September 24th of 2018. Do I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any corrections? No corrections?
All those in favor?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any deniers? No deniers. Okay. Any additions to the agenda? Looks like no. All right. Public input. I got a couple cards here, and then we'll get into some people that wish to speak. The Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood wishes to say that we are continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, and the Elderess Melinda Carr continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historical impact. Okay. And Mayor, I believe you said Mr. Ward was going to be first up to speak? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Wald?
Or Mr. Wald, I'm sorry. Would you come on up and speak, please, sir? Mr. Wald. Thank you.
Hi. First off, I'd like to thank you all for everything you've done for, like, the biking community and making this Urbana, Champaign-Urbana, a bike and pedestrian-friendly city. So, I've lived in Urbana my entire life, and I've, here I've learned how, I've learned how to bike, and I've been, I bike everywhere, and I never stop biking. Like, without a bike, I couldn't commute to school, anything. So, and my family moved to Spain for a year, and in Spain, well, where we were in Spain was Valencia, Spain, and they have a dense network of bike paths, and, so, I was able to bike three miles to my swim practice and bike back safely in the dark, both ways, and I felt pretty safe. I think we could improve Urbana by having bike paths like that. But I do think Urbana's already a very bike-friendly city, and, you know, I feel comfortable biking around Urbana. And, so, I bike to school every day, and I go to Urbana Middle School, and a lot of people I know bike to school. I mean, the bike racks are always pretty full, and I think some people aren't comfortable with biking to school, and they have bikes, but they don't bike to school, and I think bike paths could help that, too. And also, people, when they can feel safe biking, I think they feel like a better sense of independence as well, and I think some of us 12, 13, 14-year-olds need to have independence. Another positive thing that I noticed upon getting back from Spain was the Veo Ride, or Veo Ride. I think that's really amazing, and I think that's innovative to helping the biking community of Champaign-Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question.
Do you have somebody asking?
I do apologize for that. Mary Alice?
Can I ask you a question quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah? Thank you very much for coming up and telling us about your experiences in Spain as well as here. I'm wondering if there are locations that you think would be beneficial for people your age that we would be able to put in bike paths?
Well, near the middle school and around downtown Urbana, and, well, I know we already have some on Green Street. I think that was a good idea. And near the library and the center of Urbana, I think people, a lot of people are biking around there, and also, like, in, like, main streets as well should have bike paths on them.
I think with the EMCOR project, I think we're putting in some additional bikes that go down to the library, some bike lanes that go down to the library from Green Street, because it's supposed to go all the way across Green Street.
Oh.
So, that's a little bit of an improvement, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wald, Aaron. I'm not doing a very good job. Sorry.
How do you spell your last name?
Wald, W-A-L-D.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Wald. Nice to see you, Mr. Wald. Thank you.
Before you get up, Mr. Wald, does anybody else?
Wait, no, I do have a question. No, I have another, I have a question for you. You said that you were biking in the dark in Spain to swim class, there and back. What made you feel safe in the, in the dark? What's the difference in those bike paths that they had that made you feel safer at nighttime or in dark that we don't have here?
Well, there was, they, the bike paths were, I mean, essentially like mini roads, and, so, you, as you, there was bike traffic, and they stayed on their own side of the bike path, and you could just bike straight, and I had bike paths leading to my house and basically to the front door of where I swam. And, so, I only had to cross a couple roads with, I mean, there was no roads that didn't have cross-end signals that, like, were very clear about when I could go and when I couldn't.
So, they weren't illuminated, they didn't have lights? It was just like a street, you felt like?
I mean, it was, like, reflective, and I had my bike lights, but...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. I don't blame you. Okay, I believe the mayor has a proclamation.
But Mr. Wald's gonna have to come back up again.
Poor guy.
So, this is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, the lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority. And whereas, a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk and bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. And whereas, driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. And whereas, an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day, and health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. And whereas, community members and leaders should make a plan to make immediate changes to enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities, and develop a list of suggestions for improvements that can be done over time. And whereas, children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolfe Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2018, as International Walk to School Day in the city of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day. Thank you. That's gracious. All right, let's get to it.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Brian Vero Weiss. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We're here to speak about ride share.
Yeah. Thanks.
My name is Brian Vero Weiss. I live at 2103 South Mills Drive in Urbana. I'm already in trouble, because it'll sound like I'm trying to refute what this young man has just said, but I'm not. I'm here on a discussion of litter in Urbana, and specifically bike litter. I wasn't going to come today, even though I, last week, I called the city manager and complained about the ride-share bikes being carelessly left around Urbana. And I wasn't going to come, well, I kind of, I'm not that comfortable here, and, then, I was driving down Mumford today, and right at Yankee Ridge School, the brand-new school, you know, they redid and all that stuff, they have a nice wide walkway going into the front of the school. Not on the walkway, but straight across the walkway, literally straight across the walkway, was one of these bikes, the ride-share bikes. And I was going to take a picture to show you guys, but then you'd probably figure I, you know, it's so ludicrous that you would think I staged it, you know, and it's, it's... The reason I called last week was I went to the library across from Walmart, and there are at least 10 bikes just thrown down on the side, on the right of the road as you drive into that, that little road getting into Walmart. There's one to three bikes usually carelessly parked at George Huff &amp; Vine, as well as other places around Urbana. They're an eyesore. They're not, it's, it's, there's no bike racks, there are, they're not docked, according to the, to your, I read this, your, what is it called? Your memorandums on it, and the...
An ordinance.
Ordnances, thank you. And they're really not that helpful. You know, they say you can do this and you can't do that, but you're really not quite sure where you stand by doing something or not doing something. The, there's really no hel, I mean, like, for example, if, my understanding is that the, the area between the sidewalk and the street is city property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I have a flowerbed there, and somebody parks one of these bikes there, that's legal? Is that correct? If somebody parks a bike in the middle of my flowerbed...
Is there somebody?
It's city property, because that's what it says in the ordinance, that you can park in city property. So, you know, it, it's like, in, in, on the corner of Huff &amp; Vine, it's been in this guy's driveway. So, I know he can move it and all of that sort of thing, but they're, they're, they're kind of, you're talking about maybe having another ride-share service and, or a ride service and this sort of thing. I mean, this, it's not about people riding bikes and being able to have access to bikes. It's about the litter that they're making with these bikes. And, you know, if there would be a docking system or required bike, bike racks where they drop them off, that would be a, some kind of a solution. So, it's frustrating to see it and being able to realize that that's what's built into the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Brian? Mayor?
Yes.
I did want to let you know, well, number one, our contract does require the company to pick up improperly parked bikes within a certain amount of time. There is a phone number that the public can call, and I can give it to you and the listening public. It's 1-800-836-2256. That's 800-836-2256, or you can email at hello@veoride.com.
Right, but I'm...
And they will come and pick up the bikes. They also track them via GPS.
But, I mean, it's not, it's not, I mean, I don't mind picking up cans on the side of the road. I don't mind picking up cans or debris as I'm walking to CVS and back on Mumford or, or whatever, but, you know, this is a little, little, and I'm not going to call every time I get upset about a bike. So, it's, it's, it just, I think as, as time goes on, it's going to be more of an issue, especially if you have increased in bike sharing that aren't dockable, or, or at least they don't, people don't, they don't have, you know, if you had these things, if you had bike racks by bus stops, for example, because that's where they seem to be congregated, I think that would be a good idea.
I appreciate your comments. I had the same concerns about the ordinance when it passed, but I think your question, I think the answer to your question is yes, that they can park it there by ordinance, but we will clarify that and get back to you. The gentleman from city staff that would know is not here, I believe that's Marcus. So, we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you, because it says the city engineer will tweak the system, but, you know, that really doesn't help us, because there's, there's no way that we get to know about those things.
Okay, and I think Mary Alice has a question for you.
So, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of conversation on the Westerbanna Neighborhood Association email about this in the past couple of days, and Charlie, sorry for calling you out here, but I think you had mentioned that there was going to be kind of an FAQ that was going to be put out by the city that would be able to clarify some of these issues?
That's correct. Staff is currently working on frequently asked questions to post on the website and so on, and in terms of that 800 number, the company had a printing error, but they will be getting those phone numbers put on the actual bikes by the end of the month, as I understand it as well. It was my understanding, though, that parking in the right-of-way wasn't allowed.
Yeah, parking in, yeah. I didn't read it there.
Yeah, parking is not allowed in the, in the, in the grass right-of-way.
Oh.
By city ordinance, by, by cities, by the city regulations, so...
It's not in the ordinance.
It is, it's, it's part of the, the regulations that are, that are, that come from the city engineering office.
But they're not...
But they're not specifically mentioned in the ordinance. The ordinance says that...
In all the things I've got off in the internet so far.
Yeah, that's, that's why the FAQ would be really important, to indicate what exactly the city's regulations are, and then those city regulations are supposed to be put in the actual app that, that people use, which tells them how to park and where they can and can't park.
Okay. But Charlie, wasn't there a provision in there for property owners where they could remove a bike that was put on their property?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Maybe that's what he saw?
And, and bikes can be put in, can be parked on the street where there is legal car parking. So, if it's in the right-of-way next to a legal car park, you know, they, they should put it on the street where there's legal car parking.
Okay, well, there, in, in Urbana where I live, there, all the streets, there's legal car parking, so they can just move it out on the street? Okay, then that should be in the app as well.
Yeah, like I said, they...
A preferred place to park.
The, the, the city staff are working with the owner of the company, as I understand it, to get those instructions in the app itself, telling people how to park and where, where they can park.
And not just thrown down, but actually put on a kickstand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up is Rob Dahouse. Dahlhouse III, here to update on services provided at See You at Home.
Good evening. I wanted to take a moment and provide the council with an update on the services provided by See You at Home, the homeless ministry which I have the pleasure of serving as executive director. As you may have heard, we recently moved our operations from 34 East Green Street to 70 East Washington Street in Champaign, the former Time Center location. At this location, we now have the opportunity to continue to provide our services at the Phoenix Daytime Drop-In Center, but also serve as a central location for our staff to serve our friends without an address in the following ways. Through continued street outreach and connections with local law enforcement, hospitals, businesses, and concerned citizens when they run across one of our friends, whether at 2:00 AM or 2:00 PM. Through transitional housing, where we have four scattered site transitional houses serving men, women, and a family. Through education and advocacy and our annual community awareness event, One Winter Night, as well as other events and speaking engagements throughout the community. And through transportation, where we are able to transport those in need out of town if the services are not available here, whether that be shelter, detox, or other treatment options. Those services have not changed, even though we are in a new space. We also have the privilege and opportunity to continue our partnership with the See You Men Shelter and allow them to use our location to house the emergency shelter for men this winter. This service will open on November 12th. It is our goal and the goal of the See You Men Shelter to transition this program under the See You at Home umbrella of services at some point in 2019. Our long-term goal would be to provide emergency shelter services 365 days a year at that location, should the community support this endeavor. We've also recently had the opportunity to partner with the City of Champaign Township to launch the See You at Work Program, featured today in today's News Gazette, on the front page, actually, which was very exciting. This initiative, based on a model out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, pays its participants cash at the end of the workday. By providing this resource, we are offering dignity to those living on the street and giving those who would rather, or who would otherwise be panhandling, an opportunity to gain income and the dignity that comes with a hard day's work. Two of the biggest complaints and concerns I hear in our drop-in center are, I don't have a place to stay, and I don't have any money. By providing shelter and an opportunity for work, we are working to fill both of those gaps. In conclusion, we will remain focused on our mission, which is to serve the most vulnerable homeless, our friends without an address, to the best of our abilities and not duplicate services already provided in the community. This will be done through a healthy dose of grace and empowerment, empathy, and accountability. It is truly a pleasure and a blessing to serve the community of Champaign-Urbana. Thank you for your time this evening.
Do we have any questions for Rob? Oh, Eric Jacobson.
How many people do you serve?
In what capacity, sir?
Well, I guess, in a conversation today, the topic emerged as to how many homeless we had in Urbana, and so I guess I'm transmitting the question to you, because I didn't know.
Certainly. It depends on how you characterize homeless, whether that's hardcore living on the street or whether that's couch surfing, place-to-place, not with a steady income, and that number can vary from 30 to 35 of our hardcore closest friends living on the street to several hundred folks that we see come into the drop-in center each month without a steady place to stay, hopping from place to place, you know, moving from community to community throughout the year. So, I would say anywhere from, you know, 30 to 35 to several hundred, depending on how you define that.
Thank, thank you, and thank you for what you're doing.
It's my pleasure.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Looks like you got off easy.
I appreciate that.
All right. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, it looks like Mike Burris, if I said that correctly, regarding Soccer Planet.
Hello. How you doing? So, my name's Mike Burris. I'm happy to be here tonight in front of the council to talk briefly about Soccer Planet. In 2011, Graham and Liz Berry opened Soccer Planet in Urbana. It was their wonderful vision, their risk-taking spirit, and their hard work that has provided a place for soccer players to play in the Champaign-Urbana area for the last seven years. About two years ago, a conversation with Graham led to the possibility of a change in ownership, led to more...
Excuse me, Mike, can you, can you step up to the microphone?
I'm sorry, yeah. My, my fault. So, led to more conversations with Graham and Liz Berry, and eventually proceeded into negotiations. I'm pleased to say that in June of this year, a gentleman named Akeem Von Bodman, Mark Sikora and I purchased Soccer Planet from Graham and Liz. For Mark and Akeem and I, this is the opportunity of a lifetime. All three of us grew up in this area. Mark was raised here, or in Champaign, and Akeem and I here in Urbana. Throughout our lives, soccer has been a constant. Three of us were on some of the first Little Line Eye Soccer Club teams in the area in the 80s, and Akeem and I were on the first Urbana High School soccer team coached by Randy Blackman, who just finished his career this past June. Little Line Eye is also now Illinois Football Club or IFC, and they have office space inside of our, our current facility. Sorry. Mark was a freshman at Centennial High School in the second year of their program, and he's also coached Centennial, or he coached Centennial for about 10 years, and has coached Parkland Men's Soccer Team for the last 12 years. We all have families in the area now, some of whom are soccer players themselves, and Graham and Liz wanted to pass their business along to local people who shared their passion for the sport, and it's our goal to build or maintain and build upon what they've started here in Urbana. In closing, I'd just like to say that our group is excited about working with the city. We have room to grow on the current property. We've kind of moved, moving into the space for the last four months. It's a little like moving into a new house or apartment, and you kind of have to live in it for a while to know exactly where you want to go and what you want to do, but we do have a lot of ideas on how to move the business forward, and I just wanted to say thank you and look forward to working with the city through our time here in Urbana. So, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions for Mike? You gotta be kidding me. All right, Mike.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
We're awestruck.
Yeah.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Last on our roll looks to be Timothy Larson, here to present the visitors from Zomba.
Thank you.
Oh, Malawi.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. I want to take a few minutes to talk to you about your Sister Cities program, particularly your Sister Cities relationship with the, the city of Zomba, Malawi. I am a research scientist at the University of Illinois, and I've had the privilege the last couple of years to work on a project with, funded by the Geo-Scientists Without Borders, and we are working to provide water resources to rural villages near Zomba, and it's a partnership between the University of Illinois and the University of Malawi. Part of that project also is bringing cop, my, some of my colleagues to visit Urbana for this week, and we have several, several opportunities to interact with them this week, and I want to make sure that you are aware of the activity sponsored by the Sister Cities program, which will be Wednesday evening, 6:30 to 8:30, over in the library. It's going to be an informal time to get to meet with our colleagues and talk about water resources in Zomba. I know Zomba is something that you guys are interested in, so I also want to have a chance to introduce them to you so they can bring greetings to you from Zomba. This is Professor Zuzza Dulany, he's a professor in geology, and this is, this is Professor, Dr. Evans Matunga, he's a professor in geography.
Good evening.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Fine, thanks. It's a pleasure to be here, and thanks for, for having us here and giving us this time to present ourselves to you. Like you had, I'm a geologist. I teach at the University of Malawi in Zomba, where you have your, the Sister Cities program. My role on the project that we, we have been carrying out for the past two years is to help and identify the geological formations which host pot of water for the rural communities. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Like Tim said, my name is Evans Matunga. I'm a social scientist, a human geographer in the Department of Geography and Ethnic Studies at the Chancellor College. last couple of years to work on a project with, funded by the Geo-Scientists Without Borders. And we are working to provide water resources to rural villages near Zomba. And it's a partnership between the University of Illinois and the University of Malawi. Part of that project also is bringing some of my colleagues to visit Urbana for this week. And we have several opportunities to interact with them this week, and I want to make sure that you are aware of the activity sponsored by the Sister Cities program, which will be Wednesday evening, 6:30 to 8:30, over in the library. It's going to be an informal time to get to meet with our colleagues and talk about water resources in Zomba. I know Zomba is something that you guys are interested in. So I also want to have a chance to introduce them to you so they can bring greetings to you from Zomba. This is Professor Zuzza Dulany, he's a professor in geology. And this is Professor, Dr. Evans Matunga, he's a professor in geography.
Good evening.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Fine, thanks. It's a pleasure to be here, and thanks for having us here and giving us this time to present ourselves to you. Like you had, I'm a geologist. I teach at the University of Malawi in Zomba, where you have your, the Sister Cities program. My role on the project that we have been carrying out for the past two years is to help and identify the geological formations which host pot of water for the rural communities. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Like Tim said, my name is Evans Matunga. I'm a social scientist, a human geographer in the Department of Geography and Ethnic Studies at the Chancellor College. I was with city officials two weeks ago, and I was asked to convey their greetings and regards to Urbana. They are grateful because of a number of projects that the Sister City Network has been implementing in Zomba. One of them has been building and constructing a guardian shelter at a Zomba Hospital. And there is also another project involving waste management and garbage collection at Zomba City Council, which is also a product of this network. So as Sister City, we are grateful to these initiatives, and I was asked to extend the same feelings and appreciations to this city. I'm in this project that my colleague Zuzza mentioned, as a social geographer, trying to address issues of social justice, and trying to give solutions and alternatives to the challenges that our people are facing. And in my conversations with them, they are also looking up to this opportunity to move forward with these networks, to also address some of the water challenges that Zomba City is facing, especially in the informal settlements. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And does anybody have any questions for these two professors? Or Mr. Larson? Go ahead, Dennis.
I'd like to welcome you especially. I'm the president of the Urbana Sister City Program, and I wasn't able to join you for dinner because we had an earlier session before this started. So I will be meeting with you again pretty soon, and we certainly are going to meet up at the library. And I just wanted to tell the listening public that there will be some refreshments, and there's going to be a presentation and some slides about our programs and your programs in Malawi, improving water quality and searching for water sources in the geological formations nearby. So thank you so much for coming to us.
Thank you, Dennis. Aaron?
So thank you both for coming, and Tim, thank you for presenting, sharing a little bit of information. I know this is Dennis', this is his thing that he talks about all the time, and it's interesting, it's really growing, and my understanding is growing around the importance of it. The, I was looking at something not too long ago on the Weather Channel, or one of these channels, and it was talking about that the reason for earthquakes has a lot to do with the water that is underneath, that is in the surface, or in the, in the earth period, right? So when you all are looking for water sources, how, what are you using as you're looking for water sources and things like that? And what, I'm just trying to get an understanding of how you're going about that process.
I'm a geophysicist at the Geological Survey, and we have some equipment, it's electrical equipment that we're using to image the subsurface. We combine that with Dr. Dulany's understanding of the geology of the area to get an understanding of what are the possible technical locations for where you might put the water, water resources. Then we work with the villagers, particularly Dr. Matunga, to work with the villagers. This is the technical possibilities, what are your needs that you have, where will it work for you to have a water resources that can be sustained for you? So it's a kind of a combination of different, different expertise that we bring to this problem, so that we can get a program that we're not just putting down a boreholes anywhere, we're putting one where people will use it.
So these are wells, basically, that you're trying to?
Yes, yeah. They're 100, 130 feet deep, drilled down into the rock.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess not. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next up is a presentation by Kristen Walters on Imby Urbana, city-sponsored First Fridays fiscal year 2018.
That's okay. Hi, everyone. Happy to be here. I'm here to present what you very graciously sponsored, the event series Urbana First Fridays for July 2017 to June 2018. So first, thank you all very much for your support. I'm excited to share with you what we achieved in that time and what you helped do for the community. So the goal of Urbana First Fridays that we started about two years ago, a little over two years ago, is that we wanted to showcase Urbana as a culturally vibrant and commercially viable city. So we wanted more people to move here and have fun here, and then also more businesses to come in to serve that population. So here is last summer, a couple of events that we hosted on Main Street. So that was also one of our goals, to have more public activity, more public space in the central commercial area, the downtown. We have many commercial areas of Urbana, the downtown district. And thank you for letting us close off the street. It's a lot of fun. It's definitely the place where people are used to, you know, traveling through that part of town, so it's exciting that they get to come together on that oft-traveled road. We had a big concert in August that, I think that was probably one of our biggest turnouts other than the Mistletoe Market. So we had about 1,200 people throughout the night, since we had a craft market on the street as well. That was Makers on Main Street, that was August. And then on, in September, we also had some concerts on the street and partnered with many community groups and university groups that, like, you know, the physics department comes with their physics van, and the astronomy department comes with their telescopes, and everybody has a great time. So let's just move on. Another kind of key facet to Urbana First Fridays is that we mix up how we theme the events, so that we can represent the interests of many different groups in the town, and also not just groups and people and their interests, but also the various kinds of businesses that we have. So you're also, you're seeing our Women of Urbana Fashion Show, and that was a way to showcase the amazing, strong, powerful, intelligent, awesome ladies of our Champaign-Urbana community, while also showcasing the talented work of local fashion designers and clothing makers. We had a great time. Thank you Mayor Marlin for being the star of the show. And, and we use Urbana First Fridays and the events that we curate to help bring people into some of the often underutilized spaces. So this is Lincoln Square Mall, that, you know, you know, it's an interesting place. And we wanted to make sure that people have a very positive memory of the space and that we can transform it and help people imagine spaces differently, so that, you know, attracting businesses to those spaces and helping it meet its potential. Thank you Jared for helping make it look nice. And you can also see this other photo on the right, which is another market of makers. That was our revelry market in May. That's outside the Common Ground Co-op, another nice utilization of Lincoln Square Mall in partnership with Common Ground. I'm gonna just move on here. This was, this is another way that we really, another reason why we love First Fridays, is it's a really great way to help new businesses showcase their work and bring people there immediately. So this was one of the early months of the Broadway Food Hall being open. This was, it was the event with the Japan House, and it was girls' night. This was one of the only times that they were open, like, in the evening on the Fridays. Now they are, but originally they weren't open on Friday evenings. So they would open especially on Friday nights for First Fridays, and I think that really helped bring people, you know, into the space in the evening time and help them decide that, you know, Fridays are a good time to be open. So really great. Welcome to the Broadway Food Hall. They're awesome. So this actually, this is kind of the future of Urbana First Fridays. This is not, these are not photos of the time that you sponsored it, but I wanted to tell you about the future and what has happened afterwards. So it has continued on past the sponsorship time. This is Madeline Wolfski and Kelsey Langley. They are taking the lead on First Fridays right now. They're amazing. And this is actually a photo of Main Street just this past Friday, in October's First Fridays. It was Veg Fest, and so it was a celebration of local farms and vegetarian food, and people came on, had a great time. There was music, there was games, there were raffles, there were flowers. People had dinner, and after that, there was Pachacocha Night at the Broadway Food Hall. And another thing to look forward to and also reflect back on is the Mistletoe Market. That was definitely one of our greatest successes, creating a really special holiday market that we used in the Civic, or that we hosted in the Civic Center. And last year, we had about 1,500 guests come through. The market made 18,000, around that, in revenue for the local makers. And that's just the makers who were inside the Civic Center, and I heard from many that the restaurants were full that evening. So it was a very successful event across the board. And this is, these are actually numbers for the upcoming Mistletoe Market. We already have almost 2,500 people interested on Facebook, which last year, we had 3,000 total on the day of, and we're almost there in October. So we expect to have a lot of people there this year, and we're very excited to design it in a way that maximizes the revenue for our makers and gets people all the gifts that they want, and brings people into downtown from all over the region. So we're excited for that. And I'm gonna stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before you get up and leave?
I'm not leaving, I know. I've been watching.
Don't even try it. Does anybody have any questions for Kristen? Yes, Eric?
I wonder if you're, might consider, your main outreach, your main advertising on the internet is Facebook. And I wonder if you are, might consider augmenting that with a more traditional website. And the reason I ask is, well, partly, some people are getting skittish about Facebook.
Yeah.
And one of those people was me. I actually, my wife and I were actually, went on the internet to see what was going on First Friday, which happened to be our wedding anniversary, and
Congratulations.
Thank you. And there was some sort of glitch on my Facebook login, and I just said, "Whoops, I'm not going to pursue it any further at this time." And I've since figured out what it is, and it's innocuous, but, but I, if, if my Google, my Google had taken me to a website instead of Facebook, I would have learned all about it, and I know that we would have, we would have gone.
Yeah, so there are a lot of opportunities for getting the information of First Fridays in front of people that we don't often do monthly. So updating a website would be great. We actually do have an Urbana First Fridays website. I'm not sure if it's live or not, but I had somebody work on it. So I can talk to Madeline and Kelsey about, you know, promoting that a little bit more. And yeah, and we also, we haven't been printing out the maps anymore either, which we used to do as well. But hopefully, maybe we can. It's all kind of depends on our printing budget. So for right now, social media is the most cost-effective way, but we, we will absolutely work on getting it in front of more people. Yeah.
Mary Ellis?
So there's all these enterprising students on campus, and they constantly will come up, "What kind of projects do you have for me?" and so forth. And I think it would be cool if somebody created an app for, for First Fridays that would allow you not to print the maps, that you could actually log in and see what's going and have events, you know, come up. I just think it would be very helpful.
I totally agree. And I will, I, I actually know someone who did this for his, kind of, the version of this in Lafayette at Purdue, so I might just have him do it. But I, I agree that we should absolutely do that. I love using students and their work.
So do you, could you share a little bit about your vision, or it sounds to me like perhaps there's two other people who are kind of leading the way from here? Like, where do we go from here?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if that answer is quite clear, except for the fact that people really like First Fridays. And Madeline and Kelsey are, you know, volunteering right now to make this happen. They have lives and jobs, too. So I think the plan for, you know, sustaining it is getting a group of very dedicated volunteers in the next couple of months to make sure that it can live and thrive, as we, as our original vision for it was. You know, to, to have the kind of quality that it's had in the past two years, it really needs a lot of dedicated time and creative thought, and just a lot of organization and communications with people. So I, I assume it will just keep continuing as it, as it has been, and great things happening, but I can't really tell you exactly what it's going to look like in six months. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Or questions, I should say. I guess not. You got off pretty easy, too.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. See you all soon.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And next, we're headed for a staff report. Looks like there might be.
Good evening. Libby Horwitz, Economic Development Coordinator. Frasca International, which is located in North Urbana, has been awarded their largest contract to date from the U.S. Navy, and that's to build 10 on-ground helicopter flight simulation training devices. Frasca will serve as the subcontractor to Flight Safety, which is located in Colorado, for the $73 million military contract. Those are going to be constructed over the next two years. Development and business openings in Lincoln Square Mall continue with the Idea Store set to open on October 24th. Many of you might have just gone to their Poster Palooza this last weekend. You can go check them out, they have some displays going on currently. Some upcoming events, October 18th to 20th is the 10th Annual Champaign-Urbana Folk and Roots Festival. That's in various locations downtown. October 23rd is the Urbana Business Association Connections Over Cocktails. And October 26th is the Urbana Business Association Urbana Downtown Trick or Treating. Permits for single-family continue to be up, and square footage for single-family continue to be up as well. And that is what I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Jared?
Libby, what percentage of that $73 million contract is Frasca's, or is that for their flight simulators?
I am actually not aware of that. I can look into that for you.
Okay, because I don't, they're getting 73 million to make the, those 10.
Yes, that's the full contract, not, I believe that's inclusive, and Frasca is part of that. I can look into that further for you.
Sure. I was just curious. Thanks, Libby.
Any other questions? Looks like that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I had one, one quick note, staff report. I just wanted to let council know that on Wednesday, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting at 5:30. that on Wednesday, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting at 5:30 in this room. And they're going to be reviewing the draft administrative rules for Minority and Female-Owned Business Enterprise Procurement Program. So the rules will govern the administration of the program, which would be a proposed revision to our city code. The HRC will evaluate, they'll comment. They won't actually vote on this. This will come to council eventually, but they will get the first look at it. So if you wanted to tune in or come to the meeting, again, it's 5:30 this Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Next up is ordinance number 2018-10-065, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Five, Finance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you tonight, it's the Budget Amendment Number Five for the fiscal year 2019. The majority of these items are routine items that we rebudget annually. And these items are really just timing adjustments to one-time expenditures. It simply means moving unspent money for a particular project, grant, or a piece of equipment from the previous fiscal year to the current fiscal year. One thing to note here is that rebudgets don't affect the fund balance or the original purpose of the funds. And there is one significant item that is not a rebudget item in this budget amendment. And this is in regard to the University Safety Improvements Project. This is more like a budget transfer between projects. But the reason is in this budget amendment because the city code requires, requires a budget amendment if the increase is more than 10% of the current project budget. So this is related to the University Avenue Safety Improvements Agreement that was approved by the City Council on September 17. Per the discussions, a transfer of $60,000 from pavement maintenance project to the University Avenue Safety Improvements Project is needed to pay for flat powder coating on streetlight poles in FY19. In terms of fiscal impact, except for in the VERF, these changes do not affect fund balance since they are either transferred between, transferred within the same fund or rebudgets unspent funds in FY18. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mary Alice.
So I had two questions. The first one is, is I know that capital projects sometimes cross fiscal years, and that's part of the reason why we're rebudgeting things and so forth. Would it be possible before the next city council meeting, if we could just get a list of what capital projects have crossed that we're moving funds for?
Yes, I can get that for you.
Okay. And then the second question I had was just, the only oddity that I saw on here was the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. There is a rebudget of city welcome signs. I don't, is there, are we, I don't quite understand that one. Can you explain?
So this is an item for Public Works, and it has been in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund for a long time. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but this has not been, these signs have not been replaced, so it's still in the budget. So we're still...
So are we taking money that we had originally, a while ago, indicated that it was gonna be used for the city welcome signs, and we're putting it into this kind of bucket of other equipment for VERF? Is that correct? Because we're no longer in need of that money for welcome signs.
No, this is, when we do a rebudget, this will be, still be used for those city welcome signs.
Bill.
Basic, I guess you can hear me. The information center at the location of Perkins Road and Cunningham Avenue is on leased property, and based on an earlier agreement with Cunningham Children Home, that lot has been subdivided and is for sale. And one of the things that we agreed to is, is upon a sale of that property, we would have to move our entryway sign, which is at the southwest corner of Perkins Road and Cunningham Avenue, to another site. So right now, internally, we're looking at locations, and do we keep the same signage? Do we change it? There's internal discussions on that. But there is a VERF or an account for replacing these signs, which are at various entryways in the city. So that's what this is about, is some amount of money to look at perhaps a new location for that sign in the future.
So they are being used on city signs. I guess that's my confusion.
Oh, correct. Entryway signs now.
Entryway signs. And, okay, because we have now kind of given up that, what, 99-year lease on that little corner.
That's correct. Yes.
We need to find a new location.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Jared.
I'd like to make a motion that we send ordinance number 2018-10-065, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. This is Budget Amendment Number Five, forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jared, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did Bill have a question?
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Bill, did you have a question? Okay. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Well, any discussion? Right. We already voted. I'm just double checking.
Ready, shoot, aim.
All right. Yes, we're good on that. Next up, ordinance number 2018-10-066, an ordinance approving an assignment and assumption of a redevelopment agreement between the City of Urbana, Illinois and Central Illinois Soccer Enterprises LLC in connection with the Cunningham Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Project Area, Community Development.
Good evening.
Evening.
So the attached agreement is really, we're just, the council's being asked to approve the sale between Central Illinois Soccer Enterprises LLC, whom we entered into a redevelopment agreement with back in 2011. That would set the context for them constructing Soccer Planet as it exists today. And the sale is to SBVB LLC, who you heard from Mike Burris, one of the three owners. They had described themselves as soccer passionate people, and I hope that, based on his telling of the story that led them to this, that you'll agree. I'm not sure we could have found a more soccer passionate bunch to purchase this business. The ordinance that council is considering would simply authorize the mayor to approve the assignment using the form attached. The incentives in question have nearly reached the maximum allowed under the development agreement. That would be $300,000 in rebates of property taxes. So there's a outstanding payment that we're holding until this assignment is made. And once that payment is made, there'll probably be a partial payment next year, and that will conclude the payments made under this redevelopment agreement. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Mary Alice.
I'll move that ordinance number 2018-10-066, an ordinance approving an assignment and assumption of redevelopment agreement between the City of Urbana, Illinois and Central Illinois Soccer Enterprises LLC in connection with the Cunningham Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Project Area. We move forward to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that, please.
Okay, so moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Dennis. Do we have any discussion? Getting the hang of it. All right, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the ayes take it. Guess we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 2018-10-047R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency Grant for Public Arts Program Operating Support fiscal year 2019 Urbana Public Arts Program, Community Development, again.
Good evening.
Hello again.
The attached resolution would accept the fiscal year 2019 Illinois Arts Council Agency General Operations Support Grant that is only awarded to exceptional arts organizations, I'd like to point out from the memo. This is a little bit larger allocation than we've received in prior years, in the amount of $9,200. However, it is unrestricted program support, so it will be added to the general fund and help to offset the cost of the public arts program. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of this item.
Okay.
I'll second then.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion?
I will move, I'm sorry, the mayor reminded me. I move sending this to council with a recommendation for approval.
And I second that one.
I echo that. Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, resolution number 2018-10-048R, a resolution authorizing the execution of a First Amendment and restatement of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Urbana, Illinois and the Housing Authority of Champaign County, Illinois concerning Urbana Town Homes Property, Community Development, again. Hello, sir. I'm not sure I have enough cardio to get through that whole paragraph.
Good evening from this side of the room. All right. This resolution is just proposing to amend the agreement that was entered into in 2013 between the Housing Authority of Champaign County and the City of Urbana. The original agreement had articulated that Aspen Court was to be part of the project. Aspen Court has been purchased by TWG, and they're in the process of renovating that using low-income housing tax credits. The other difference with this one is that we've added Brent Shore Development. Brent Shore Development was selected by the Housing Authority in the interim to be the developer for the project, and they're going to pursue low-income housing tax credit for the project development. And the other part of this is to extend the term of the agreement so that they have sufficient time to apply for the tax credits and get the project financing together. And David Northern, Executive Director of the Housing Authorities, in our audience, if you have any questions, project-related questions.
Any questions? Questions at all? Eric, something on your mind?
Always, but not, I have nothing, no concerns about this.
Just checking, sir. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, Dennis has a question.
No. I would like to move forward, Resolution Number 2018-10-048R, a resolution authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the restatement of the intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Urbana, Illinois and the Housing Authority of Champaign County, Illinois concerning the Urbana Town Homes Property, mainly because this is in my ward. And I'd like to recommend that it be sent to city council for approval.
I'll second. Okay, motion by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Do we have any discussion? Eric?
No, I'm just getting ready to say aye.
Oh, okay. You're just right up there, man. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Okay, the ayes have it. And it looks like our last topic here, an ordinance number 2018-10-067, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1301 East Washington Street, 2018, Community Development, yet again.
Good evening. The city has been working to sell a city-owned property located at 1301 East Washington Street since about 2008 at this time. And the ordinance before city council would allow the auction, or the property be sold at auction at a minimum price of $5,000, with the purchase agreement also being contingent upon the demolition of all buildings and parking lots upon the site within 90 days of closing. So the exhibit and ordinance would allow the mayor to execute that purchase agreement with the highest responsible bidder at an auction date that has yet to be set for the property. There will also be a public hearing, which has already been noticed in the news gazette, prior to the city council meeting next week on October 15th.
Okay, any questions? Mary Alice.
With, let's see here, let me get the right ordinance here. I will move ordinance number 2018-10-067, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate at 1301 East Washington Street. The recommendation for approval forward to council.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Aaron. Do we have any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And it looks like we are adjourned.